Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 1st regularly scheduled meeting of the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Aaron Tuckfield, and I am the chairman, and I just brought the meeting to order, which is the first item on our agenda. Second item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could rise with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is the roll call. Our secretary is not here this evening, so I will call the roll. Mr. Piper?
Here.
Mr. DeCosta?
Here.
Ms. Faustic?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present. That is four members present. Three of them are regular members, one of them is an alternate, which means by our bylaws, we do have a quorum this evening. I should note for the applicants in the audience this evening that because we are an even-numbered body this evening, that we might result in a tie on a vote. If there is a tie, that means that the motion fails regardless of what the motion is. So if the motion is to approve and it goes two-two, it fails, and the motion, it falls, and the variance or lack of variance would not be. And same with the reverse. If any motion is made and it's two-two, it fails. Because of that, because we have less members than we normally do, typically what I do is at the point on each item where we would go to a motion by the board, I'll ask the applicant first, and you will have the opportunity to have us table it until our next regularly scheduled meeting. If you're not comfortable with the way the board is looking at it, or you think that one more member would be better for you. So I'll give you the opportunity at that time. We can explain it a little bit more at that time as well, but just want to make sure everybody's familiar with what our procedure is and kind of how we stand this evening. So with that being said, we are going to move on to item four, which is addressing any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'm going to call the roll. Actually, before I do this, I'd like to entertain a motion to exclude members Slosson and DeBruin from any roll call votes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. DeCosta to not call Ms. Slosson or Mr. DeBruin on any roll call votes this evening. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay, that motion carries. All right, now I'll go to the items, the addressing any conflict of interest. So I'll call the roll on this, and if any member has a conflict on any item this evening, please signify by saying yes, and if you have no conflicts, please signify by saying no. And I will call the roll. Mr. DeCosta?
No.
Ms. Faustic?
No.
Mr. Tuckfield says no. Mr. Piper?
No.
All right, no conflicts of interest this evening. We're going to move on to item five, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any motions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 10th as presented.
The agenda.
Ah, yeah, agenda, Mr. DeCosta, sorry.
Then I'll also make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Is there any support?
I will support that.
Supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay, that motion carries. Next is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. They'll be for November the 10th, 2022. Is there any discussion or motions?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. DeCosta, any support?
I will support that.
Mr. Piper supports. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay, that motion carries. Item seven is old business. I don't believe we have any old business this evening, Mr. Box.
That's correct.
So we will move on to item eight, which is new business. First item is 8A, that is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0311 EF3, for permanent parcel 0825151061. Wade and Jeanette Pennell are the petitioners. Mr. Box, if you could take us through this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So first and foremost, both, I'll say, both items on tonight's agenda are very similar in nature, so some of the items that I'll discuss up front on this first item will really pertain to both of them. So I don't have to repeat myself, I guess, when we get to the second one for some of those things. So this first item, the applicant is located just off North Avenue, between 21 and 22 Mile Road, and they are requesting a variance to locate their jacuzzi or hot tub at three feet, three inches from the principal structure. The ordinance requires a 10-foot separation distance between these features, and I'll talk about that a little bit here in a second. So again, here's the ordinance in particular that requires them to be 10 feet. So one thing to note, and this is again for both items, so our ordinance is silent to jacuzzi, spas, hot tub, whatever you want to refer to it as. So over the years, it's been treated as a pool because of the similarity, considered an aquatic, open water feature. A number of years ago, however, it was brought to our attention that it was silent, and this is obviously before I was with the township, but there was an agreement, an internal agreement to treat hot tubs and pools, or hot tubs and spas with the five foot through the building department when they pulled their permit, as opposed to 10 feet, just because there was no health and safety issue, really, with allowing them to be five feet closer. I did talk with Mr. Maples. A lot of that had to do with them feeling that there was a need to have a space in case, you know, work or maintenance needs to be done to these facilities to keep them away from the house. That being said, the ordinance still says 10 feet, so that's why the variance they're requesting is from 10 feet, even though there is that agreement, and the building department is approving them at five feet in the township. So this location, you can see the pictures here, this hot tub is already in place. It was installed on their patio, and I think that's their intent, is to keep it on the patio. That's what they would like to do. It is three feet, three inches off the foundation or the principal structure. Again, necessitating the variance that they're requesting. So we did send these documents to internal departments. Assessing had no objections. Engineering had no engineering-related objections. Fire did have a concern about the proximity of the hot tub's heating element to the house, and planning noted that it appears that the hot tub could be located in an area that would satisfy the ordinance. It could be located 10 feet off. However, then it would not be on their patio, which is their intent, which is why they're here this evening, to try to keep it on their patio. I did speak with the fire department this afternoon with regard to their concerns about the proximity of the heating element, and I asked them, you know, at what distance would you not have that concern? And they said four feet. So at this point, being that it could be placed on the property and meeting the ordinance, we don't identify a hardship, so we would defer to the applicant to identify a hardship if one exists for this ordinance, or for this variance, excuse me.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions from the board for Mr. Box?
I do have one.
Go ahead, Mr. DeCosta.
The ordinance says 10 feet from another building. We keep referencing the principal structure because I think they, they're calling it 3.3 off the foundation. However, it's really probably closer to a foot, foot and a half off the building.
Correct. So the outset there, if you look at the pictures behind you, the lower picture in particular, you can see that there's some bump outs on the house. The way the ordinance is written, it's from the foundation point of the house.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? Question? Okay. Seeing no other questions, I will open it up to the applicants. If you could come forward to the center table here, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening on this. My name is Wade Pennell. My wife, Jeanette, live at 48526 Baychester, as referenced in the documents. I had read through the initial information that was just discussed and prepared to address some of those issues. Specific to the alternative location for the hot tub, that's not an option relative to the condo association. They are extremely rigid with not allowing anything to be off of patios. They have removed for cause even bird feeders, so they have no historical tolerance for anything outside the patio. They consider that to be the common areas of the condominium and are not eligible to place any personal on. So that would not be an option for us to be able to relocate it off of that. Couple of issues relative to this issue on the heating elements. First of all, all our motors and heating elements are not on the side of the hot tub that faces the house. They're actually on the side that faces the open portion of the patio. So the distances from any of those elements is well past the five feet that would normally be of consideration, and certainly past the four-foot consideration that the fire inspector had mentioned. I also did a web research on the NFPA website for hot tubs. There are 20 articles in the NFPA related to hot tubs, none of which relate to the element of the heating elements being of concern. They're almost exclusively, I think 17 or 18 of the 20, were all about wiring issues. This installation was performed by a licensed electrician. In fact, it's the same electrician that built all of the 25 units that are associated with Phase Two of our condo complex. So there were real no references in the NFPA to any overt concerns over heating elements specifically as it relates to that. I brought copies if anybody needed to see the NFPA web search, but it's also openly As a final component, should there not be a company, our 3.3 is close enough to four, I, I'm happy to go to Home Depot and buy, they make a ceramic insulating blanket that I could mount on the inside of that panel that's closest to the house. It's rated for 2,300 degrees. If the fire was that hot, it would melt through the bottom of the hot tub, and the 395 gallons of water would put the fire out. As you note from the picture, this is not on a deck structure, it's on concrete that was specifically set for a hot tub, so it doesn't add fuel or concern to the fire, you know, if a motor should short out or something like that as well. So what I'm hoping is that you will agree that the consideration that this, these factors mitigate the concern that the fire marshal, and of course, he didn't say he objected, he said he has concerns, and so hopefully my explanations have addressed those concerns. Does anyone have any further questions about those?
Very good. I appreciate it, sir. Any questions for the applicant from the board?
Do you have the document that shows the hardship that you cannot put the spa or the hot tub off the patio? Do you have anything that shows that?
I don't have anything that I brought this evening because I didn't realize, but the condo association bylaws clearly outline that the residents are entitled to a 12-by-24 patio, max size, 12-by-12-foot deck, max size. Personal items like I'm asking for here, the hot tub is an item that's allowed by the condo association if their approval is granted. Took me a long time to get their approval, but I got it. But there are no permissible items located off of those common spaces, the patio, the deck. There's a small area on the porch where personal items can be placed, but even those are limited. So there is no tolerance for anything off, and that's clearly in the bylaws from the association.
Any other questions?
One question I had is, you had a contractor put it in. Was it necessary to pull a permit on this, Josh?
This is where the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is where the whole thing started, was I thought that the electrician had pulled that, the electrician brought to my attention that he doesn't, it's the homeowner's responsibility. I went to the city and filed an application after the fact for the permit, and it was in that application process that I was told by the building official, Mr. Maples, that he didn't have the authority to grant the permission to do this. It had to come through the board for a variance because I couldn't get the offset. The hot tub is eight-by-eight, and so it's, you know, you can't put them structurally right at the end of the concrete patio. There has to be some minimal offset, they reinforce it. So they recommended when I, you know, when I put through that there be a, you know, a small border, which is why I'm at 3.3.
All right, seeing no more questions, I am going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? If you would, please go ahead and speak at the standing podium over there. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none, and without any dissent, I would close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Mr. Box, I actually did have a question that I wanted to bring up. The rear of this house is on a, it might be a condo, so I'm not sure exactly how that connector road is considered, but it is on, essentially on a street on both sides.
Double-fronted property, correct.
What is the setback on the rear of that property relative to be able to put a patio or something of that nature where you could put a?
So this property is, I believe, under a consent agreement when it was originally developed, so I think part of that states that they can operate these as a traditional backyard.
Okay, so in theory, there is no setback other than the standard, I don't know, 20-to-a...
Seven and a half feet for accessory structures, and yeah.
Right, okay. All right, very good. And then to the applicant, if you could, you referenced a standard, I don't remember the initials, can you tell me what that standard was?
The National Fire Protection Agency.
Ah, the NFBS, yes, yes.
That is commonly cited in ordinances and in legal technicians about how they defer to that entity for official rulings about all manner of things that relate to, you know, wire gauges and thresholds for what's high voltage versus low voltage, and different standards for managing those from an electrical perspective, from fire safety.
And to clarify, to make sure I understood, your position is that they, A, that they are silent to the heating element, and that if the heating element was in fact concerned, it is not on the near side of the house and is therefore outside of the four feet, is that?
Yes, and I did additional internet research trying to find causes of fires, and, you know, obviously, I'm concerned as the homeowner to make sure that I'm providing a safe environment for myself, my family, and other residents, so I wanted to be thorough about that. And most problems that have existed were with older units. This is a brand-new 2022 unit. It's a high-end unit from a master spa, it's a very pricey unit, unfortunately. And so they said that most of those problems occurred with either inferior construction that hasn't been as prevalent in the last five, 10 years, and with improper insulation by somebody who didn't, you know, install it correctly and caused motors to short out and things of that. So I've done this by, this will pass code in the sense that there's an outside disconnect for the 50 amp circuit, it's a GFI interrupt for that circuit, and then, of course, it comes into the main house, and the main house has a secondary circuit breaker, so there are multiple.
Did you have to, did you have to double ground rod that breaker?
I'm sorry?
Did you have to double ground rod that breaker, being a water appliance?
The, I'm not aware if the electrician did or didn't. I didn't perform the installation, so I don't know what he did. The box that he used does have grounding, and I believe it goes into the standard grounding, but I don't know if it's a separate.
All right, very good. Mr. Box, with regards to the fire department's concerns, are they, are they a concern? Are they, were they referencing a specific portion of the code? What?
I don't believe their letter referenced a specific portion of the fire code, other than they had concerns with the proximity of a heating unit to the sidewall of the structure, or the principal structure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Any other questions from the board? I'm trying to pull up here the fire department's statement. I don't remember seeing that besides, do we have anything on that besides the summary, Mr. Box?
I have a copy of what they sent, if you'd like.
Just the summary, I believe, is what you had in your packet.
It's just the one sentence. Mr. Pennell, we have a summary of it. Do you, by any chance, have a more detailed version from the department?
I'm looking. I don't think so, and I see the summary, but I thought I saw in my packet an actual letter, just like I did from the other departments, and all it said was what was put in the summary, and that is that they have concern over the distance of the unit from the principal structure because of the heating element. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything except the summary now, so I don't know that I actually have beyond the summary.
A question also, Mr. Pennell, with regards to the location of the patio. You said that the association, I believe, maxed you at 12-by-24.
Yes, sir.
Do they stipulate the orientation that that is in? I.e., you currently have it parallel with the house, the long edge parallel with the house, do they stipulate where that goes?
It's a square, so it would have, I mean, the only opportunity would be if I made it diagonal.
Well, I guess, and not to be maybe foolish here, but perpendicular to the house so that the 24 feet runs away from the house as opposed to parallel with it.
No, they don't allow that. I'm sorry. It's the max 24 width, max distance from the foundation.
Max distance of 12 feet.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
No, no worries. And then I guess this last question would be to Mr. Box, Mr. Box, Mr. Loy, I'm continuing my streak tonight, apparently. Obviously, if our ordinance had conflicting portions in it, we would look at that with regards to creating a practical difficulty for the applicant. The applicant here is referencing a neighborhood association bylaw that appears to conflict with our ordinance and its ability to use. What is our leeway in recognizing a neighborhood bylaw relative to how it conflicts with our ordinance?
Well, I don't think the bylaw conflicts with your ordinance. The question is whether the bylaws create a hardship for the applicant. And in this situation, a lot of times when we're looking at certain items in backyards, the question is sometimes, is it the size of the lot, or is there an easement which precludes someone to place that item where they want to place it? So, I mean, from what I'm hearing from the applicant is that his hardship is that he's only allowed a 12-by-24 porch pursuant to bylaws, which are, the master deed and bylaws are covenants on the land, they're restrictions in terms of land use. And so because that restriction on the land use, he can only place it, and he can only place it on a porch, that's where he has to place it. So that's essentially what I'm hearing from him is his hardship.
Would those possibly be part of the CJ, the consent in that case? Is that ever, are those done together, or are they separate?
Well, master deeds and bylaws are, I mean, it could, they could reference in the CJ, but the master deed and bylaws, you will usually outline the elements of what you're entitled to do on your property, like, you know, there has to be certain fascia, or the condominiums are certain sizes, so many bedrooms, you can have porches, but they can only be certain...
So they may reference something from the consent judgment, but they wouldn't necessarily be part of that?
No, because it's a condo, you have to have a master deed and bylaws. That's primarily what he's referencing.
Okay. But in this case, your, what you're referencing is that if it would not necessarily be a conflict, but it would be a recognition of a potential difficulty in putting an improvement on his property relative to our ordinance.
Right, so he's basically saying, you know, I can't put it five feet because I'm only allowed a 12-by-24 porch, it has to be on the porch, I have to put it in the middle of the porch, and so that's what he's saying.
Okay. All right, last question, I think, for Mr. Box. I had a few here. Fire department indicated to you that they would be more comfortable with four feet. Were they aware of the heating element? Was that part of their discussion, or were they looking strictly at the edge of the...?
They were looking at the heating element, which it sounds like from the applicant that the heating element is not on the side closest to the structure.
Okay. All right, I think that's all the questions I have. Any questions, comments, or motions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant this variance because I believe there is a hardship that's caused by the bylaws. I think the hot tub itself is not granting a special conveyance to this property. They are limited because of the bylaws in order to do that. It's, and the fact that our ordinance doesn't specifically address jacuzzis or hot tubs, I think, is something that makes this unique in that would cause that hardship, would cause us that we should grant this variance.
Okay, very good. Motion by Mr. Piper, and just to summarize, Mr. Piper, you're stating that the practical difficulty here is the hardship provided by the...
By the bylaws of...
The bylaws of the subdivision.
Right.
If I could...
Let's get a second for just one second. We might have to amend it, but I'll get back to you, Josh. Is there a support on that?
I support.
All right, support of Ms. Faustic. Josh?
I was just going to point out that prior to a motion, you were going to offer a tabling.
You are absolutely correct. Thank you, Josh, I appreciate it. We are, we do have a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded, we do have discussion. I believe, Mr. Loy, I can ask the applicant this. I don't have to rescind the motion first, correct?
No.
Okay. To the applicant, so...
Happy to accept the judgment of the board.
Okay, very good, appreciate it. That said, is there any further discussion?
If I can, maybe if we could amend the motion just to have the applicant, not that I don't believe you, I apologize, just to provide the bylaws and maybe a picture of the heating element along the side to satisfy the concerns of the administration.
So the variance would be contingent upon the planning department receiving the appropriate bylaws showing what he had indicated...
The hardship.
And a schematic of the hot tub showing the heating element on the, I guess that would be the east side?
Yes.
On the east side?
I would, that'd be fine to have that amended.
Actually, it's the north side, I think.
Okay, I was, that particular sub turns me around, so...
It'd be for a moment, too.
Okay.
I would be fine with that amendment.
All right. Ms. Faustic, are you fine with that amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Do we detail it enough for you, Josh? Do we need to, okay?
That's good.
And you're okay with that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion has been made and amended by Mr. Piper, supported by Ms. Faustic, and I will call the roll. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield, yes. Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
That motion passes for nothing, the variance has been granted. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, and I supply that back to the building department?
I think you would talk to Mr. Box and the planning department.
Planning department.
I'll have to come back for my permitting issues anyway, yes, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that moves us on to item 8B. This is a request in the zoning ordinance, section 10.0311 EF3 again. This would be for permanent parcel 0826151186. Ryan and Kim Pagel are the petitioners. Mr. Box, could you please take us through this one?
Sure, very similar to the last agenda item. This is dealing with a setback for a spa or hot tub from the principal structure. This property is located north of 21 Mile and east of Card Road, and I believe that's Lake Arrowhead subdivision. Again, the ordinance requires 10 feet from the principal structure. The building department has an internal policy due to the fact that the ordinance is silent on hot tubs to allow them at five feet. Here's a schematic of what they're planning. So unlike the previous item, the previous item, it was already in place. This item, to my knowledge, is not already in place. They're looking to get their permit to build these items and have the jacuzzi setback two feet from the principal structure, as you see in this schematic here. We did send this around to our internal departments. Again, assessing and engineering had no relevant concerns. Fire had the same concern with the heating element and the proximity to the house. And Melissa in the planning department did note that the hardship here appears to be self-created, as if I go back to this image here. So they're putting in a pool. I think her point is they're putting a lot of stuff in their backyard. It could be either redesigned, whether it's a smaller pool, or a smaller hot tub, or whatever, I think is what she's getting at, that it could be redesigned to meet the ordinance. And then Public Works did want to point out, again, that, and I'll go back to this, that there is an easement in the rear of the yard. So looking at the schematic, it shows some trees in the easement, those would not be allowed by the Public Works Department, nor would, it looks like some steps off the patio may go into the easement, there would be no concrete allowed by them in the easement. So some of this may need to get redesigned slightly regardless, but they do have an easement in the rear of their property. Until that being said, I think we're going to, much like the last one, from an ordinance perspective, we don't identify a hardship, so we're going to defer to the applicant to identify a hardship.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions from the board? Mr. Box?
I have one quick question. How big is that easement? How many feet is it?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It says in here 12.
Is it on here? I'm sorry.
Is it on, Mr. Piper?
I don't, I don't see the easement. Is it on here? Is it on there?
In the Public Works summary.
Oh, okay. All right, I can look that up, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I will open up to the applicant. If you guys could come forward at the table, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
My name is Kim Pagel. This is my husband, Ryan Pagel. We're at 22327 Heights Drive, just like on the San Diego's. Before we even get into the hot tub, I know the easement's a whole separate issue. I don't know where the miscommunication was, but none of that brick is in the easement. We are 12... was, but none of that brick is in the easement. We are 12 feet from our property line, so there should be nothing encroaching. We knew about that from the very beginning. I talked to the water department and all of that. So, nothing should be encroaching that easement. We were not aware about the landscaping, so that hasn't been done anyway, so we will just remove that from our design. So, that, just wanted to address that first. And then with regards to the hot tub, we know this was our design, so we understand our own hardship on this. We did shrink the pool as small as we could going length withwise, as small as we could just because we had that easement. The pool's obviously 10 feet from the structure. The hot tub placement, that was really the only place we could put it. And if we go five feet, we felt it'd be, we could go five feet, but we felt it'd be a little bit more unsafe for people to walk around it because it would be that much closer to the actual pool's edge.
And it risks that kids would fall into the pool if they're walking around the hot tub.
Because it can absolutely be placed five feet from the structure, but we would prefer it not to be that close to the pool. We also did get the comments from the fire department as well. Our hot tub is similar to the other gentleman's, where the heating element would be placed on the further side away from the house. That's not an issue for us to do. We've already been in contact with our, so we're really looking to get it to two feet off of the back.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone on the board have any questions for the applicants? Hearing none, I will open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing none, and without objection, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions, or motions?
I'm just looking at the design, trying to figure out the distance between the hot tub and the pool, what and how much, as it's currently, you know, requested. How much space is that? It looks like four feet here? Is that right?
Yeah, so that, the small little line that's kind of halfway shown from the edge of the hot tub up to the pool?
Yeah.
That is showing the hot tub?
At five feet.
Five feet away from the house.
So, you would?
So, it's close to four feet, which we would think if we're using the hot tub all year round, you know, the ice and the snow, it's, you know, the risk is them falling into the pool, walking around the hot tub.
So, if it was at the five-foot distance, it would be four feet between the tub and the pool?
Okay. I should note for the board that even if the board's wish was to allow for the hot tub to go to five feet, I believe we would still have to grant a variance even though it, I believe, has been commonplace.
I don't know that's true. So, what he's basically is saying is that the building department has been permitting five feet because they believe that the ordinance is silent as to hot tubs. So, if they would have come in and it was five feet from the structure, they would have received a permit.
Just making sure, so even if that's the case, however, it is not in the ordinance before us. Are we able to take that into account and go by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but the fact of the matter is if they moved to five feet from the structure, they wouldn't even need a variance.
If we assume that they can go get a permit at five feet out?
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
Exactly. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I'll take a look and make a motion here. I would make a motion to approve the variance to allow the hot tub two feet from the principal structure contingent upon the applicant showing that the heating element, again, is away from the, more than four feet away on the opposite side.
Is there support?
I will support that.
And similarly to the last applicant, we have a motion that has been supported. As I mentioned earlier, if this was to be a tie, that motion would fail. So, if you had two votes yes and two votes no, the application would be denied. I should also note that once we have denied a variance, I don't believe we can rehear the same variance again. So, I would give you the opportunity, if you would like to table this until the January meeting. I cannot guarantee you that we will have five members, but I would anticipate it, and if at such point there was still not five members, we can table, if you wish, until we have them. So, I would give you the opportunity to go forward or to have us table it.
We'll go forward.
Go forward, please. Okay. All right. That being said, we have a motion by Mr. DeCosta and supported by Mr. Piper. Is there any discussion on the motion? I should say, Mr. DeCosta, I should ask if you are going to, if you want to include the same language with regards to the heating element.
Here, yes.
Did you?
Yes.
Apparently, I was not listening with both ears. All right. Very good. Motion by Mr. DeCosta, supported by Mr. Piper. I'm going to call the roll. Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Faustick?
Yes.
Mr. Chuckfield votes no, and that motion passes three to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the next item, which I believe is one of the last ones, but I have to scroll all the way back to the top of my agenda. Public comments is item nine. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment this evening? If you do, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments and move on to ZBA member comments. Any comments from anyone on the board this evening?
Very good job pronouncing my name this evening.
Thank you. I manage to pronounce it right, I think, every time, hopefully. Anyone else? No?
No, we're good.
All right. We'll move on to planning director comments. Mr. Box, anything from you this evening?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Mr. Loy, I know you're not on the agenda, but anything from you?
Only that, I won't see most of you until next year, so Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. I should ask, Mr. Loy, I know we've talked briefly, and maybe I'm thinking about this only from the planning commission. We've talked about doing a workshop.
Yes.
Is that still on, and do we have any, that was for both planning and CBA, correct?
Yes, that's still in the works. It will, at this point, it'll be after the new year.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, and Merry Christmas. All right. With that, item 12 is adjournment. Any motions for adjournment?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
I support.
Support by Ms. Faustick. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and at 7:07, we stand adjourned.